Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting for the Okamis Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the business of the school board. Secretary Phelps, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. Tom Buffett.
Here.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Here.
Shulon Doxy.
Here.
Mary Jabara.
Here.
Melanie Lynn.
Here.
Jamie Taylor.
Here.
And I am here.
Wonderful. Seven present with no one absent. There are two opportunities for public comment tonight. Citizens who wish to address agenda or non-agenda items will have an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting as well as near the end of the meeting. In-person individuals who wish to address the board must complete a blue form located with the agendas near the room entrance and present it to the board secretary prior to the start of the agenda item. At the appropriate point in the agenda, the board president will call upon individuals who have submitted a blue card for their comments. And next, we have the opportunity. And we have a blue card. Okay. At this time in the meeting, I should slow down a little. Citizens have the opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest that may or may not be a part of the evening's agenda. Citizens are required to limit comments to three minutes, except when this requirement is waived by the board president during the meeting. A designated timekeeper will communicate to individuals addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment and input. However, the board meeting format is designed to facilitate the evening's agenda and therefore restricts board members from engaging in conversation with speakers or immediately responding to questions. Questions and concerns may be addressed by the board later in the agenda and may be assigned for follow-up by the board or superintendent at a later date. And tonight, we have one blue card. Deidre Wilson, if you'd please come to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Deidre Wilson. My address is 2711 Loon Lane here in Okamis. I appreciate the opportunity to come before the board today. I'm really coming, you know, I have a ninth grader, new freshman to the high school. And in light of the tragic events that we've all been watching around the country and in Georgia, I really want to take the opportunity to come before the board and discuss my thoughts, my questions, and reflect a little bit on, you know, our policies and procedures here in the school district. I think as a parent, I'm an informed parent, I like to think I'm an informed parent, I have a very good understanding about what we here in the school district do as it pertains to, you know, lockdown procedures, safety within our schools, the amount of money we invested, and they're vast, they're vast resources. We're very fortunate to have approved a number of new safety upgrades. And I look at that as the part of the process that's the end part. It's the unfortunate part of these tragic incidents where we have to take action. And I think I have an understanding about sort of the front-end process. As a school, there are threats. There are, what we consider as parents, probably threat actors in the schools. And I believe they're flagged. I think our school district, from my understanding, and we appreciate as parents, do a really good job of sort of flagging those instances and those students who we consider potentially threatening. What I don't think I, and I've talked to a lot of parent peers, what I don't think we have a good understanding, and I've looked at the policies, and I think they're laid out, and even they're before the committee today reevaluating some of those policies, is what happens between here, where we flag, and here, where sadly, we might have to deal with a threatening incident? And what kind of risk assessment sort of happens at that point? And, you know, I look at how I approach things, I look at how I professionally approach things, and I have a very good understanding and a lot of information on how I make decisions. But as a parent, I've recognized, and in talking to a lot of peer parents, I don't think we necessarily feel like we have a good sense of what that risk assessment is when there are threat actors in our schools. And I understand through our sort of restorative policies that we have, that extreme actions aren't always taken in those instances. But what seems to be the case in every one of these instances nationally is sort of that follow-through. In every one of these instances, there have been flags, and yet, there isn't a great understanding, and when there is, it's always in hindsight, about the lapses that have occurred in those instances. And so, you know, from a sort of taking stock of the situation perspective, because I know the policies are before the board too, you know, is this an opportunity, and I implore the board to take the opportunity to reassess, reassess the students that, you know, have had threats on their record? What's being done? Are they continually followed and followed up on? Because I think if you would go ask any one of those schools, and we've seen in hindsight the follow-up in those schools, they would all say they didn't exactly do enough. They were more...
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, reached my three minutes. So, you know, I just wanted to come with those thoughts. You know, in time, I believe, as you look at those policies, that we as parents probably would want to know how they're being operationalized a little bit. But I didn't think there was any, unfortunately, better time to bring it to the attention of the boards, we've just had yet another school event.
Thank you very much.
I want to tap on her phone number real quick.
Yeah, sure. Up next is our superintendent's report and request. Superintendent Hood, I will turn it over to you.
All right. Good evening, trustees and members of the community. It's good to see everybody tonight. Thank you for your patience with me. I want to start off by thanking the Hazlet Public Schools this evening for assisting with our videoing and recording tonight. Director Isom of our operations technology group has replaced what's called our tricaster in the back room, that's what broke at our last meeting. So they've worked very hard to procure and replace that. We just need to be trained on the new item before we make it public and have all of our community members tuning in. So, great job by Director Isom and his crew. Thank you to Joe Dutcher and Hazlet Media Group for recording this tonight. We'll post it on our website as well. So, great collaboration across districts tonight for that. So just wanted to start with that, with that thank you. To start tonight, you may recall, before summer, we forecasted our bond timeline for you and talked with you about a need for a special meeting in December. Way in December, we're in need of a special meeting to hit our timelines. Christman has been constantly reviewing that, and they're going to need to move that December special meeting to early January. They need some additional time to do some vetting, and they need to hit a January timeline for us. Our original January meeting will be too late because we don't meet till January 13th. So the ask is, could we move our special meeting to Monday, January 6th? You would get the pre-information on January 2nd, we know that's kind of a holiday, but you'd have that information in the packet. If we called a special meeting on the 6th, you'd have it by the 2nd to look at our bid package 3C. So I wanted to make sure the board had time to consider that timeline and act in the same manner as we've had with our approach on our other bid packages, but with the holiday and board approval being needed in early January. The request from Christman is moving that special meeting from December to January 6th. Can we pause there and just see if there's any concerns about that from trustees?
Sure. I mean, we just need a quorum ultimately. So as long as we can get four people, we will have two new board members, so...
And they won't be...
They won't know.
They won't be officially onboard until the 13th.
Right.
Yep.
So you'll have five of us.
No, the other ones are still through, right? Or do we end right at...
Well, they end at the end of the year.
We'll have to...
I think that's a true question.
Yep, I think that's a good idea. I hadn't thought of that.
So let's find that answer first, but ultimately, we should still have five. Oh, Ms. Walworth.
I can swear that in that meeting, you do like a semi-organizational meeting is usually in January, and swearing them in is usually part of that, we could swear them in first.
And then do the special meeting? Yep.
Hello.
I mean, all being said, I don't have a problem coming on the 6th.
Any concerns?
I mean, I can come on the 6th, that's not an issue.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We can be here.
Thank you. I really appreciate Christman being way ahead of this. It's September 9th right now, and again, reviewing our timelines as we do every week with them. They have said that 1217, they're not going to be able to hit, but they want to hit 16. So I'll follow up with them.
Okay.
Superintendent Hood, I should ask you real quick, does this affect any of our timelines in terms of construction?
Does not.
Okay, so this is just a bid issue, not a operationalized...
Correct. Yeah. If we had gone to the 13th, we'd be running a little tight, so that's why they want to do it on the 6th. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Couple of other things to update you on are, we are waiting some test results from Kinnawha. We're doing some environmental testing at Kinnawha. We had a few parents and a teacher note some concerns with one of the classrooms there after we had cleaned the classrooms and potential mold. We don't know if it's mold or not, but potential mold. So we've already contracted out with ERG to look at that and give us an update, just like we did in our other environmental concerns from last year. Director Leiber's already put measures into place to assist with that concern. He's looked at the air handlers in the building. He's looked at the cleaning schedule and when it was clean, and the humidity in that wing. And already noted the temperature in the cooling units was too high to kind of dehumidify the air. So he has remediated those already, but we'll keep you posted as we learn more. Our staff and community can expect a communication from us once we have those results with the remediation plan, along with that information to be posted to our environmental website as well, just like we did throughout last year.
Do you have a timeline of when you expect the results?
We're expecting it any day.
Okay.
Yeah, we're expecting it any day. We do know that ERG has been very timely with us when they do their initial assessment. If they've told us, hey, you know, this room, you need to move kids, we've moved kids right away. They have not said that in this case. So we're awaiting results from the lab, and we think, you know, some carpets may need to be cleaned, some carpets may need to be replaced, that type of thing, so we can remediate the rooms and where those levels exceed our standards. So we'll keep you updated. Okay? The book study, I have suggested timeline for our book study coming up, The Human Side of Change. We're going to pick up where we left off. And we left off, I believe, on chapter five, Substance, New Agendas, Old Problems, pages 74 through 90. And in that document on the yellow sheets, I've broken down all the rest of the chapters by board meeting, so we could have a trustee lead the discussion for those different dates on our book. So I'm looking for a trustee to volunteer to assist with chapter five at the September 24th meeting. Coming up with some discussion questions and conversation.
September 23rd?
23rd, yes, I'm sorry, 23rd.
Just want to make sure.
Yes, you're right. Because today's the 9th, not the 10th. Anyone who would like to help lead our discussion on pages 74 through 90? If not, I'll pick someone.
I think we're doing that.
I don't want, I mean, I did the last one.
You did the last one.
But I'm happy to do it again if anyone else is excited to do it.
There's like 10 more opportunities, so everybody's going to get a choice, a chance.
Is that how we do it here?
Yes. It's like a teacher, I'm going to call on everyone in class eventually.
Melanie, you want January 13th.
Yes. Yeah, she does.
Jamie, you can go 13th also.
Yeah, I'll take the January 13th one. Just kidding.
September 23rd? Or trustees, I can just assign you to, I can just assign you a date too, if that helps.
Reverse alphabetical order, though.
I want to be a squad. I'm happy to do the 23rd.
Okay. So Tom will do the 23rd. Can I have a volunteer for October 14th then too?
You can just put us in wherever.
Why don't you just do it? You like doing, you like facilitating.
Oh, Melanie.
I mean, it's just discussion questions.
I think this should be Tom's job all the way.
Can we have a new title then?
There you go. Whatever you like.
I'm happy to do that, if that's helpful.
You can create your own title. How about that?
And I'm happy to, if we want to Zoom or call before to have a conversation, I'm happy to assist as well, so just let me know.
Can we just put our names in here then?
Yes, that would be great.
All right, there we go.
Thank you. Moving on, our survey tool of Panorama, we have continued to progress on our integration. We're doing our final, like, double-check on the integration between our student information system and Panoramas, and the data uploads, how those are working. So we're doing, making really good progress. My administrative team is actually meeting tomorrow to look at finalizing some questions for our student, student survey that we're going to launch here in early October. So exciting progress is being made. The nice thing about the Panorama integration is we'll be able to, once we give that tool to our students, be able to give you some nationally-normed data on some questions that have been used at schools across the nation to let you know kind of how Okamis ranks in terms of our climate and culture. But equally importantly is us comparing to ourselves in our pre-and post-data during the year, so we can both have that national kind of temperature-taking, but then we can see how we're working to improve the Okamis Public Schools over time here with that data. The, I've been very impressed with Panorama thus far, and again, the goal here is then to hit our other two stakeholder groups, our families slash parents, guardians, and then our staff members as well. And I think we're well on track to hitting all three by the end of the year. So, very, very pleased there. Let's see, board operating procedures. We have been working with Executive Assistant Walworth to incorporate feedback from the last board meeting and kind of crunching those down. We are linking in the board policies that were kind of redundant in the board operating procedures, and then the subcommittee is going to take one more look at that before we bring it back to the board. But we also thought the timing of this coming back coinciding with a conversation about the board's retreat, because some of those topics might overlap, would be appropriate not to bring it tonight to you. So I don't know if there's anything that trustee Buffett or...
I would just add that even not tonight nor the next meeting, but maybe the meeting after the retreat, after the chance to talk, to talk through some of the questions that we're, we'll talk about later, about retreat agenda topics.
I totally agree. Yeah, a lot of what the operating procedure stuff kind of depends on some of that retreat discussion, so.
Yeah. We, let's see, what else here? Trustees are going to receive an official Okamis ID badge. So we're forecasting for you to take your picture at our next meeting, so you'll have an ID badge that will identify you as a trustee, which we think's important if you're at events or, you know, coming in to an area that you have a way to say, no, I'm a board member. No, really, I am. So we heard that feedback from you, and Michaela will forecast taking those pictures for your badge, and we'll print them for you and have them to you by the end of September. Okay? So I know you're all excited about that. It's like a school picture all over again.
Yay!
Yeah. And finally, I just want to say congratulations to the Okamis varsity football team.
Yes!
And truly, the Okamis community. So Coach Effie and Coach Javi have done a great job with our football program. The amount of growth you've seen in our students, their skills, and both their maturity of being a team, really present. Coach Effie invited me to practice about three weeks ago, and I could just see night and day in terms of the understanding of football, the understanding of good fundamentals, the discipline at practice, to run a tough, tough practice with tough feedback from coaches, and you could see it on the field. And, you know, it's not easy to be an Okamis and have a team that's not successful. And those students have showed what perseverance is over time, and what character is over time, keeping their heads up and trying for a long time to get that win. So the respect I have for them and their families and our coach for keeping your head up and not giving up says a lot about what we mean with educating for excellence and inspiring each learner for life. So it's not always about wins and losses, but that perseverance and those life skills that are being learned and demonstrated are something we can be proud of. We certainly are proud of that win. It was earned, it was a great community feel. Our students were fantastic in terms of following our directions to celebrate on the field afterwards in a respectful manner. And the, I have not seen that field complex look as good as it did in terms of our operations department being ready to put on a good, a good show, a good foot forward with the way that facility looks. It was packed, more than I've seen it in homecoming. The whole stand was packed, the band was playing, there was energy and just excitement and happiness and joy. And certainly felt good to celebrate that from our students and with the Okamis community. So thanks, Coach Effie and our students, just wanted to say congrats.
Definitely.
And with that, we'll take any questions or comments from our trustees.
Yes, trustee Phelps.
Just real quick, I want to echo what you just said about Friday night. It was, it was electric. I've never, the happiness was amazing. And I want to do the same thing. I want to thank you and your staff for allowing the students to celebrate. Because there was just, you could just feel it. They wanted to go, and you found a safe, organized way for them to run out in the field, and, you know, and they left very calmly and nicely, and it was, it was just a fantastic thing. So thank you for allowing them to celebrate. It was awesome. Congratulations to Coach and the players. I mean, one of the players that I personally know, he has never won a football game, and he's played football for five years. He's never won a football game until yesterday. So just, the amount of excitement and everything was amazing and contagious. It made me very happy and proud, so thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Taylor.
We can't just talk enough about it. I saw not just how much our community supported us, but all of our surrounding communities have, it has been really great just to see the Greater Lansing area appreciate how important that win was. And I also really wanted to extend my gratitude to Coach Effie. You know, my older boys, I was involved in youth football a long time ago, and it's been a long time that we've been waiting to have someone in a leadership role like him in that program. And it's a program. We're not just talking varsity football, we're talking from our little guys all the way up. And I feel like we're finally at a point where we're building an actual program. And that's really exciting. So kudos to everybody involved. I saw, I can't remember which news, but our game was the number one, number one team this week. It wasn't DeWitt's toppling of Mason, it was, it was our Okamis Woods winning, because they won pretty good, so.
They did.
Very exciting.
Awesome.
Anyone else?
One quick question about Panorama. I know you said they give you national norms. Do they do like, like districts, or is it just all the kids who took it anywhere?
Let me ask, I'm not sure. Let me ask. That's a great question.
I mean, you know, showing our own growth, or since we established Ben Smart's overtime is going to be much more relevant.
Yep.
And as we make sense of it for our first time, that'll be really interesting.
Yeah, I'll check on that. That's a great question. I did not ask, so thank you.
Then we will move on to board reports and requests. I will begin by acknowledging correspondence since our last meeting. We heard from Valerie Levitt regarding walkers and bikers to Hiawatha Elementary, and then from Amy Burton concerning evening and weekend fine arts events. And then I will open up to any board members who have anything they'd like to highlight or any issues they'd like to bring forward. Yes, trustee Taylor?
The parking lot at the high school looks amazing.
Yes.
It is so awesome to see the artistic ability of our students and just all different spectrums. It is just such a delight, and I am so glad we started to do that. It was, it's really something special, especially I saw some like drone footage.
Yes.
So you could see it from, it's so cool. I'm glad we started doing that.
So trustee Taylor's talking about our seniors have the opportunity to paint a parking spot at the high school. I think we started that right after COVID, to give students something, a new tradition. I think it's our third year of doing that. And we do, you know, assist kids that may have difficulty with the supplies and help them with that, but it was a, it was a great Sunday morning event with Dr. Kemsley and high school staff, and it really turned out nice.
I feel like it gets better every year.
Yeah. Do we know how many kids?
I don't.
I think it grows each year.
I don't.
I think so.
I know Executive Assistant Walworth was out there, and turned up beautifully, so I can find out for you. I'm not sure how many kids, but yeah.
Well, just dry pissed?
Yep.
Anyone else have anything? Yes?
One kind of question is about the policy around flex.
Yes.
And I know we got that email from Dr. Kemsley saying that the county had said that it didn't, wasn't stopped immediately, and that was a big shock to high school students that I know. And I'm just kind of wondering whether there's some steps forward with that, or if there's any recourse, and if you could just, and I don't know if that's, at some point, I'd like to be updated, because it feels like a great example of giving students voice and choice.
Yes.
And I know it's a source of support for students, and so this feels kind of undermining that spirit.
Yeah. So for those of you that may not have a high school student, we had a flex period, on a Thursday, students could choose where, which class period to go to to get extra help from a teacher that may have had. And we had some pupil, be flagged by pupil accounting for not counting towards instructional time, because we weren't meeting some of the criteria that needed to be met to count that as instructional time. So we had to do a pretty quick shift away from that, so we didn't get penalized for that hour of the day. And Dr. Kemsley is going to be meeting with me later this week, and we're going to be looking at potential updates, well, during this pause, of what we could do to re-envision that time. It was a time where many of our students chose to get extra help, but in Dr. Kemsley's data collection, he noted that only about three out of every 10 students took advantage of that time. So that meant seven out of every 10 weren't using that time in a beneficial way. So we're going to try to solve and do both. Provide a, provide some student voice and see if we can re-envision what that time might be to kind of meet that, that need for some additional support for more students, but also certainly meet the letter of the law for counting it towards pupil accounting. So I'll keep you posted. And Dr. Kemsley's aware that, you know, we want that student and staff voice to be a part of that decision, the solutions, so we'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Sorry, I have one other thing. Trustee Taylor has passed the torch as a, to me, as a representative from us to the England School Officers Association. She had our first meeting last Thursday, and Adam Spina from Williamson presented, and he mentioned start times, and so that felt like a good opportunity to kind of bring that up with that group. So that conversation about kind of healthy sleep habits is continuing. We had another meeting today about it with Superintendent Hood and trustees Kavanaugh and Taylor. And we have, I don't, the dates that were, have a series of community forums that have been envisioned, and dates are forthcoming, I think, pretty close. We also are envisioning an event for trustees from other England County school districts to, as an educational opportunity, and inviting trustees and superintendents and athletic directors to that. We originally thought that would be best done in November, but thinking about a little bit more, knowing there's a lot of, some turnover in board membership, that we'd push that till, till January. So that's where we're at with that.
That's great.
So I do want to, I want to follow up on the speaker and the content. I was very moved by, as I'm sure every broader community was, with the event, the incident in Georgia and the loss of life for four of those community members. And I know, based on what were the updates that we've recently had in terms of our threat assessment, and I know that we want to be cautious about the information that we share, but it's an interesting perspective that the speaker did note. So I'm wondering if generally, the approach that the district takes in terms of dealing with student needs and could be shared with the community in general, and I'm not just talking about gun violence and, you know, the opportunity for someone, but students who demonstrate that they have a need, and I think there's an opportunity for us to envelop this discussion with our social-emotional practices and all. So that may be an opportunity for a community discussion, or at least a presentation for consumption by the community, so.
I think that's a wonderful opportunity, and the remarks are very, very well taken. And I think telling our story and making sure our community is aware of the new system that we've just put in place after three years of work on our behavior threat assessment process, where we can find it on the website, where we can find it in the handbooks, and our, our parents and students should know what that is and be able to... Where we can find it on the website, where we can find it in the handbooks. And our our parents and students should know what that is and be able to point people to it and articulate what the district's doing and how that process works. So, we do have some education to do for sure. The good news is is we have a really good system in place. The opportunity is we have to let people outside of our staff know that that system is in place. So, while we do have a portion of the website that's going to be unveiled in terms of the district threat assessment process to help with that. And we're just on the cusp of doing that education piece. But I think the timing comes at a great time. And that certainly that feedback is is I'm sure that's shared across our district of people wondering, well, what do we do with threat assessments? And I can tell you, I'm very proud of the of the work we've done over the last three years with Dr. Margaret Coggins to develop a BTAM-aligned threat assessment program. And then our new partnership with Prevent to Protect at MSU as well is something to celebrate and make sure our parents are aware of too. So, when we do get a student in the pipeline, we can give them extra supports outside the school district. So, I look forward to our phone call conversation and making sure we can tell that story and bring awareness.
Can I follow up sort of on that? So, we have okay to say program that's there. But I think making sure everybody, parents are aware of that too. I feel like that's maybe more high school. People are aware. But I know that I had a parent reach out to me, I don't know, last winter about a concern. I think it was over the weekend.
Yes, I remember we talked.
I don't know if I'm rose to this, you should call the police, you know, and just I think making sure our whole community understands where that is and you know whether it's contacting the principal, but that's over the weekend, just to make that clear.
In our threat assessment teams, we have one in each building, social worker counselor, teachers, principal, like a good cross section of every building. There's a district-wide threat assessment team. The threat assessment teams can work with each other to help with threat assessment on on students. But in terms of I just lost my train of thought.
Parents, yeah, or like families, who they
Be able to call.
Where do they
Yes. So, we also have addressed and want to make sure it's clear that if a parent has a concern after hours or on the weekend, that you call Meridian Township Police. Do not leave it on our voicemail. Do not leave it on an email. And we want to make sure that's very clear to our community. We've made that clear to our our teachers and staff that if you have a concern about a threat, you're not going to leave a note on someone's desk. You're going to talk to someone on the threat assessment team. So, we can follow up right away. Because to our speaker's point, there were people in these schools that have known something wasn't right, but a system failed in terms of quick and efficient and effective follow through. So, that's the lens we use for the Oxford Report to debrief with our BTAM team when we did training this summer and before the school year started. And we'll do the same debrief with this last incident nationally to see what lessons we can learn and incorporate that into our threat assessment teams and protocol and response. So, I look forward to sharing that. I think it's a great opportunity for continued growth in that approach, but also have great comfort in the work that's been done over the last three years with Margaret Coggins. We've met once a month with our threat assessment teams to come up with this process, come up with a way to house and track those students with a software platform we use. So, I'm really, really pleased. But again, that's not a destination. That's a journey.
And BTAM, just for the public, is behavior threat analysis and management.
Yeah.
Or assessment and management.
It's one of the gold standards of the research base for a good workplace violence threat prevention system. So, so you'll hear more from me soon on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
As will our speaker.
Yes, trustee Phelps.
I can thought of something really quick. I was just curious, when can we expect our student representatives?
That's a great question. Let me check out that.
Thank you.
And I say it's a great question. They're all good questions. So, if I don't say yours is a great question, please don't make a comment. John said mine was a great question, but not mine. I know I gotta be. Thank you for the question. What I should be saying.
I know.
We also talked about students being elected in some representative way. So, any word on that or?
Yep, Dr. Kemsley is on that. The advisors are already aware and they'll work on elections for moving forward with students.
Maybe that's the delay in having them here. I don't know.
I'm not sure. We'll take a look. Yeah.
Anyone else? Then we will move on to our action items. Within the action items, there is a consent agenda. Is it the will of any board member to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, then we will move on to the consent agenda. And I will ask for a motion, please.
I move that the board approve items one through three for immediate implementation and appropriate action. Item one, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of August 12, 2024. Item two, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of August 26, 2024. And item three, approval of the minutes of the executive session meeting of August 26, 2024.
Support.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Lynn. All those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion passes. Up next, we have some additional action items. First up is the certification of winter tax. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board certify the following winter tax rates for collection on behalf of Okemis Public Schools from Meridian Township, Aldonian Township and the city of Lansing of nine mills, non-homestead, 3.5 mills debt and .4925 sinking funds. And from Williamson Township of 18 mills, non-homestead, seven mills debt and .9850 sinking funds.
Moved by trustee Doxy, supported by trustee Buffett. And this requires a roll call vote, please, secretary Phelps.
Sure.
Tom Buffett?
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Shulon Doxy?
Yes.
Mary Jabara?
Yes.
Melanie Lynn?
Yes.
Jamie Taylor?
I'm a yes.
Okay, and the motion passes. Up next, we have employment certification. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board approve the employment of Sarah Simons, counselor at Bennett Woods in Central Montessori Elementary Schools, effective September 9, 2024, in accordance with sections 1232 and 1230A2 of the revised school code conditioned upon receipt of acceptable criminal history checks and criminal records checks.
Support.
Moved by trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Phelps. Do we have any discussion?
Director Martina, is there any discussion on our new hires? Our new hire, I should say. Sarah Simons.
Yeah, so just a note, we still have one more that we're trying to fill within Bennett Woods. We had a couple right before the school year started, like the week before resignations that went to other districts. So, that's what you're kind of that's coming in front of you right now is those last couple that we have to fill. But staff has been really diligent about getting them filled. So, we do have another candidate that we're going to bring forward. And that should kind of close the loop for those ones that we have outstanding. But I don't anticipate unless something comes up any more instructional positions that have to be filled. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Seeing no questions, all those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion passes. Up next, we have the board policy first reading of many policies. I will ask for a motion, please.
I move that the board waive the reading. I got to settle in for this one. Waive the reading and adopt first readings of board policies. 3115, nondiscrimination and retaliation. 3115A, definitions. 3115B, designation of coordinators. 3115C, supportive measures. 3115D, informal resolutions. 3115E, grievance procedures and remedies. 3115F, complaint dismissal and appeals. 3115G, additional requirements to prevent and address pregnancy discrimination. 3115H, training requirements, record keeping and policy notice. 3118, nondiscrimination covenant in contracts with the district. 4105B, religious workplace accommodations for employees and applicants. 4229, acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence. 5202, unlawful discrimination, harassment and retaliation against students. 5206, student discipline. 5206B, student discipline and students with disabilities. 5206D, student discipline, enrollment following misconduct at another public or non-public school. 5208.01, acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence. And 5715, student oral health assessment.
Moved by trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Doxy. Did we want to hear from the policy committee regarding these? Or do we have any questions for the policy committee?
I would just note these are all from true, kind of they're all minor policy updates based on law changes, things like that. There's not a lot of substantive changes in these.
And we have provided again the summary of the revisions by policy in a chart as we did last year when we when we redid. So, kind of a Cliff's Note version of what what is being changed for each of those policies.
Which I think is great. It's very helpful to just have that quick reference.
Yes.
Okay, then seeing none. All those in favor respond by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion passes. Next up is a student trip. We heard from the choir director at our last meeting regarding a trip to New York in February. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board endorse the OHS choir trip to New York City proposed for February 13 through February 16, 2025, with the understanding that students will abide by all school policies and procedures.
Support.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. All those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion passes. Okay, up next, we have a couple of discussion items. We need to assign some delegates for the MASP Fall Conference. Is there anybody who's already registered, planning to go? Trustee Buffett, trustee Phelps?
I'll be there.
Trustee Kavanaugh. Okay. And the delegates require that evening before?
It's like a delegate assembly.
Yeah, we would need a delegate and a backup just in case. Is there all three of you willing to do it or two of you?
I've done it the last couple of years. I don't need to do it. I mean,
Okay.
So,
Now, you could have first because it's what time is it? It's in the evening?
Yeah.
Wednesday evening?
Oh, Wednesday evening.
Wednesday or Thursday.
It's usually the day before the conference starts or probably Thursday.
This is the October conference?
Yeah, it's probably going to be the Thursday if the conference starts on Friday.
I'm guessing it's on Thursday night.
Yeah.
I'll be your backup.
I'll be your backup. Let me see. I think I can do that, but it could be tricky. So,
Can you
One of us will do.
Can you let Rihanna know when you guys come to a decision?
Thursday at 7?
Thursday. Thank you.
One positive thing, you get 40 education credits from MASP for it. So, it's like a, you know, to build your MASP education recs.
There you go.
Yeah.
And just a reminder for our trustees and community, that is the conference we've been invited to speak on our threat assessment policy to MASP with SEC and Jason Russell. So, we'll have, I think, trustee Kavanaugh, myself, Katie Deal presenting to other school boards our threat assessment policy that Friday.
You're official. You're in the official program.
We are in the program.
Is it possible to get recordings of that?
I'll ask. I'm not sure.
So, MASP offers a Zoom option for people who can't attend in person. And I think that you can go back and watch if you can't see it live. So, it may already be a thing through MASP.
I wouldn't count on the breakout sessions being all.
No, is this just a breakout?
It is one of the breakout sessions.
But again,
But I can
Take that back.
To the point before, I mean, we will have a presentation that we could come give here again to for our community. So,
Yes, that would be good, actually, John.
It might be a good thing for us to just have.
Especially later the comment we had. Good to tell our tell our story again and create that awareness. So, good opportunity.
It is our presentation. So, I don't see why we couldn't record it if we wanted to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Okay, so if trustee Buffett and Kavanaugh can confirm with Rihanna based on who's the first and who's the backup? Okay, then the next item we have is the board retreat planning. And we have some survey results, I think, that we can discuss.
Yeah, so Subcommittee of the Board met to discuss the board prioritization planning tool that we did as a result of our work session with MASP. So, I think it was trustee Buffett, trustee Taylor and trustee Phelps looked at the data from the board and are coming tonight with some recommendations for discussion for our retreat based on that data. So, I'll turn it over to them.
Great.
Well, I don't know if you had a chance to read our memo, but that kind of laid out kind of what we did and where we arrived after looking at the survey results, including the open response items. But we kind of basically put the recommendations that we got from Yvonne Kamal Kanual into three buckets, those that we kind of pushed move forward for kind of recommended retreat topics and those that we thought would be better discussed elsewhere. As you know, some of the survey items actually asked, where's a good place to talk about this?
Yes.
And there was some consensus on some of the items about this is something we want to talk about, but not at a retreat. And then there were some that, you know, also were were kind of marked for other other places, either special sessions or a regular board meeting to discuss. So, I don't know if you'd kind of add to that, but we'll let our some of our work speak for itself.
Well, in the the possible retreat agenda items, we kind of created that bucket because there were there were some results where we were kind of like all over the place. And we felt like those topics deserved a little bit more discussion tonight to figure out where we might actually land as not necessarily a consensus, but we because we were definitely all over the board on some of them. If I don't know if you had a chance to look through the survey results, but those where we were all over the place, we brought forward to discuss tonight to figure out what do we want to do with these topics? Do we want to just not talk about them? Do we want them to be at the retreat? So, that's what that category was really created for.
Just to be super clear, so there are two big buckets of topics that we had talked about as recommending that we discuss the retreat is one both our process for creating board meeting agendas and our structure. And and kind of a big part of that structure was a question of committee work. So, it was kind of those were the two things that felt like that we felt as a board actually identified as things that would be worthy of our time and attention at a retreat. The ones that trustee Taylor just mentioned in terms of being possible were around our community outreach efforts. And there was some different ideas about that. And that was a good example of what trustee Taylor was just saying. And then also about whether or not we should spend retreat time talking about the strategic plan and where we're at with that. Those are the two like those are obviously important topics, whether or not they make their way into retreat is was a question.
And with the committee conversation, that was one where we were kind of all over the board with how we were feeling about committees. But it really aligns with the executive committee because that was something we had consensus on as far as having an executive committee. And so, we felt that it was worth having a conversation tonight because as a whole, we were all over the place with where do we we how do we feel about committee work? But it does also align with planning our agenda and doing the work of the board. So, we felt like it deserved some conversation tonight to figure out what to do with that committee piece. And that we should also probably include it with retreat conversation.
And I would just say once we're done with all this, you guys did that really well, our intention is to discuss it with our facilitator. Like, these are kind of our topics that we decided. Help us now develop a more concrete agenda based on these topics. Organize it in terms of, you know, time and, you know, all that stuff.
Facilitating.
Yeah, facilitate. Yeah, he can then, you know, do his job of facilitating those topics in an efficient manner.
She.
As if it's she, I'm sorry.
Yep. And I did speak with Penny this morning. Penny Kentish McWilliams is the facilitator. I did speak with her this morning. I shared with her the memo from the committee as well as the survey data and was going to get her in touch with President Jabara and also get her in touch with you to finalize after the discussion tonight, that approach. So, great discussion with Penny. I think she's looking forward to a really wonderful retreat opportunity. Just she just wants to get to work on preparations. So,
And I would just add to that, the intention is then to bring back the retreat agenda at our meeting on the 23rd, which is the Monday before our retreat.
Great.
So, that just as a timely. So, really, for folks who did not meet over lunch to talk about retreat agenda items, we'd love to hear from you and what you think and where, you know, about what we proposed and especially the items that are possible retreat agenda items as well.
I just have a quick question about there. It seems and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but and you have suggested agenda. You have planning and forming committees, but then not suggested for the retreat, you have forming the committee for agenda planning. Wouldn't that be the same?
No. So, the difference there is we were in consensus as a board that we liked the executive committee idea.
Okay.
So, we didn't think that that required So we didn't think that that required a discussion at the retreat, because we're all in agreement on that already. Where we were all over the place was the board committees, so whether it's a finance committee or a policy committee.
So it's different.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Or an HR committee, or a marketing committee, policy committee.
I was reading it to be the same thing, and, okay.
Understandable, yeah.
Yep, okay, that makes sense. Anybody else have a question or comment?
Really?
Thank you for doing that, you guys.
Like, it was hard, like, I don't, you know, we had the data, we had the survey data. But we also acknowledged that there were parts of it that were a little confusing while we were answering it, so.
It was hard to write, so, sorry. It was like my fourth iteration.
Yeah, we did. And we were able to get the information out of it that we needed. But we wanted to make sure that with what we are proposing, if, if it feels like that's what you were expecting our retreat to be. I mean, it seemed like it from the survey results, but it was a little, it was a little challenging to extrapolate what it all meant. So I want to make sure that what we're recommending is actually what you envisioned our retreat would actually be.
Someone remind me how much time we are scheduled, because then that leads into how many items we focus on, and how much time we put on each agenda item. So if someone can help me with that.
Was it like a nine to five?
Nine to four.
Yes.
Nine to four.
So we have nine to, nine to four in that place, is what we have.
Nine to four.
Yep.
I thought it was pretty much an all-day retreat, which is fine, but I think, like, I need a little more information. I mean, I support what the suggested agenda items and even the possible, but like, I don't see a whole day here. So without having a little more meat behind it, and maybe that's what you need to discuss with the facilitator, how like deep we go with this.
Well, I think that if, if you're comfortable with what we're proposing, the idea is, okay. Because each one of these is probably, each one of these suggested topics actually, even with the meeting at schools, we were kind of all over the board about that as well. So that in and of itself could actually be a discussion, because we weren't necessarily in alignment on if we thought we should move it around. So that might actually be a lengthy conversation to get us to a point where we agree on which direction we're going to move. So each one of these could have the possibility of being a fairly lengthy conversation to get us to a point where we agree on how we're going to move forward.
And that would be the facilitator's job, to rein it in, when we get long-winded.
Or to take these and, and tell us, here's how we should discuss this, and here's how we should discuss this. And so, do we, do we think that's enough time to get the actual proposed agenda on Monday, I guess is the question I have right before. What if, what if there's not agreement on what that agenda is?
I mean.
From the facilitator.
I don't think that would be the case.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that's.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's more of a, these are the things we have learned that the board would like to discuss as a whole, let's move forward with planning, you know? I don't, I don't think they're going to just provide any sort of, no, that's not going to happen kind of thing.
And I do think forecasting it on the 23rd is fine, but I wouldn't expect major changes at that point, because the committee's done the work.
Right.
Sorry, trustee, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I, I know that the discussion is on top, on the topic, but based on some of the comments that are being made, I, the reason why I thought that we were having a retreat is so that we could actually talk to each other. So the, the concept of, this is moderate facilitation that we're talking about, not, you know, we need to talk. So I just want, I really don't want a lot of flip charts and put this sticky note here and put this sticky note. I know, I'm just being very clear with you.
I totally agree.
I am not supportive of that, and I will, you know, that's not my expectation. So even before we're talking about how we're going to get to the topics, there are, just like we continue to say, that we need to have discussion, substantive discussion, because all these, all of these items that are not recommended for a retreat, we need some, the at this board table, or in concept, you know, in the concept of, at the board table, with the, at the convening of this body, we need to address these topics that are not recommended for the retreat. So we need to have some substantive discussion, like, very frankly, like, I don't mind coming, you know I don't mind coming out of the gate, just saying what I feel. But I don't want someone telling me, don't say what you need to say, put it on a little sticky note. Because I, I really want the other six of you to hear what my feelings are on this particular, on a particular topic. So I just want to be clear, those are my expectations in terms of how we're going to interact from nine to five at a retreat. I, I just want to make sure.
So, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Great, great.
The question I was going to ask is, the, not at, not at a board retreat discussion, because we all agreed that that's a discussion we need to have here, that's what, that's why those topics are in that category. Not to say we can't talk about them at the retreat, but.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
May I interject there?
Yeah.
So to that point, I will be bringing for you to the retreat, and it kind of goes under board planning, is a outline of the whole year and all our meetings. So we can be intentional about plugging in those other topics that should be talked about at a board meeting and not in the retreat. So we, we could leave that retreat with a calendar of board presentations and expectations for when all of these things are talked about during the year. My team is meeting tomorrow to finalize our portion of the, the board planning calendar. So when you get MTSS updates, when you get data updates, when you get, you know, budget, all that will be built in, and we can figure out when to plug in those others as well. So I'd be happy to bring that to the retreat for that, the calendar to be developed and finalized as well.
That will be helpful.
So with that, I mean, appreciate you having like a planned out calendar for the year, but I think to trustee Lynn's point, because I, I had that same question, like, what do we do with these? And so if they're on the calendar, I would like to have some space to not just have agreement, yes, we want it this month or that month, but what are we actually looking for in those presentations? And just be able to dig in a little. So if we can build that in, that will, I definitely support that.
So, I would just like to lift up, again, when we talked about priorities, this again was in the bubble, but we really use that word in two different ways, right? And one is about our own development and things like how we plan the meetings and structure ourselves. That's about our development and work. And then the second way we use priorities is about what we talked about around this table and what's most important. And so I just want to keep reminding us of that, because, and it really, as you may look at our, our own document, the second way we use priorities is this, you know, it's three bullets in on a, on a suggested retreat agenda item. So it's kind of buried. So what I hear you saying, and this one kind of check my understanding here, is really kind of lifting that part out, making sure that has some equal weight with some of our own development work that we need to do. Does that sound right? So there's some substance to the conversation about, again, not just what we talk about, but what our expectations are for that.
May I follow up, just to get some clarity on what you're suggesting? Because I, I read in the memo, and I see the memo that says, board priorities and developmental priority, you know, board priorities for the district and board priorities for our development. Those are the two categories, if you will. I understand that. I just don't see where that lands in the suggested retreat agenda. So is that kind of embedded in there? What, what is the treatment of that?
Of the two different?
Yes.
Well, so how we plan our meetings, right, is one of the things that we are, want to talk about, right?
Is that under board meeting structure?
Yeah, and if you go down to where it says board retreat planning.
Oh, I didn't even see that last, oh, that third.
That's why I said it's kind of, but it is buried in there.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 I just want to honor the, what I hear there.
Okay. I saw the signatures, and I thought that was it.
So, fair enough. So, yeah, so I, I want to kind of own that.
Okay.
Because in truth, I would say that partly because of where we are in our year, and as we've talked about before, with a kind of vision for doing retreats earlier, right? But here we are in September, end of the September, before we have our retreat, that focusing, you know, on some of the work that we want to do as a board in terms of getting better at our practice and our organization. And that's, I think, why it's, the, the priorities for what we talk about at the board table are a little bit buried here. But what I've heard is, is wanting to make sure those have, I don't know if it's equal weight, but are lifted up. Is that?
Okay.
So, I, I would just say thank you, because it does, when I look at this document, even if you got to the next page, it feels buried, so.
Okay, and I appreciate you addressing that, because it, it didn't stand out to me as clear. So I appreciate that. And I appreciate the work that you all did to put this together. If I would have read page three, maybe I would have seen that.
Three is a big number, though, you can't get that. It would take a lot to keep scrolling.
Stop it. I owned it that I didn't read page three.
The other loop that I wanted to close, and I'm not sure if it's appropriate for the retreat or not, we can always do it in a closed session, too, was the growth measure, the superintendent's evaluation. So again, that's going to drive the work we're doing with, you know, from the superintendent down to our teachers and students in terms of how we're going to measure our growth data. I'll have some models to review. It doesn't have to be at the retreat, but Assistant Superintendent Bailey and I have been working on applying the data from the last year into some different models for the board's consideration. So that could either be a retreat item, or we could do it in a closed session at, at a meeting. So we'll just put that out there as well. But we'll, I'll be ready for that by the time the retreat comes around.
Just to clarify, I want to make sure, the retreat is not a closed session?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure we're, we're clear on that.
But superintendent's evaluation is?
Is, that's what, and that's what I'm saying. So I don't know if the board retreat necessarily is the right spot, is my, or be my feedback.
Yes, yep.
I just want to follow up real quick on what trustee Lynn said. I totally agree. The purpose of this is for us to have open, frank, substantive conversation on these topics, because we are all over the page on this. I 100% agree. If someone tells me to write some stuff on some sticky notes and sit down and be quiet, no, that's not what we're doing here. That's not my intention. Our, my intention is to really, you know, talk to each other, and, you know, let's throw each other's opinions and challenge each other, and, you know, you know, hear some different perspectives. That's certainly my intention, and if that doesn't happen, I'll be really disappointed, so.
And we can make sure that connection happens, and that can be shared through president Jabar and through our subcommittee with the facilitator.
Okay. Anything else anyone wants to add? Okay. Then we will move on to our second opportunity for citizens to address the board regarding any items of interest. Individual comments at this time will be limited to three minutes, but may be extended at the discretion of the board president. A designated timekeeper will communicate to the individual who is addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment. However, the meeting format does not allow for the board to engage in conversation with speakers. Questions or concerns may be assigned for follow-up by the board or the administration at a later date. Do we have any blue cards?
We do not.
We do not? Okay. I'm not seeing any other matters, unless anyone has anything they need to add. Okay, then we are adjourned at 8:10.